Already the committee of the whole is back in order. Senator Cabo on section one.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I also hope everyone had a very fine dinner and is all in, or in good moods this evening. Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, obviously, there's been, for several hours, has been a lot of contention. And there are many issues, but a lot of them dealing with the use of the proceeds of a bond indenture. Mr. Chair, I'm, I've, in, in, in a spirit of, of trying to work with our colleagues, trying to build a consensus, I put an amendment forward. And this amendment forward takes into consideration some of the issues that have been brought up by members of this body in either areas that they believe they don't have enough money or areas that maybe there's too much money. My sentiment in all this is, hey, folks, let's, where, where, there is no more majority. Let's try to work towards a consensus. And obviously, none of us can get a hundred percent, but if we could come close enough um, that there's, that for the better good, we pa, we enact a piece of legislation uh, that will provide for services as well as provide for some of the requirements. So, Mr. Chair, I'm putting forth this amendment. I don't know how many minutes I have to, do I still have enough time to summarize it? But it's in several sections, I mean, it's actually one, two, three, four, five parts to the amendment, but they're all interrelated. So, in, 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 in a nutshell, what the amendment does, it, it moves around the proceeds uh, of the bond indenture uh, from what we currently have, uh, have been, uh, that has been, uh, currently been shown to the body. You, there is a, um, a decrease in the appropriations uh, for the education uh, portion from thirty-five million to twenty-nine million, five-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars. But with that, there is a like increase for the tax refunds from sixteen million dollars to twenty-one million, uh, nine, one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars, as well as an additional three-hundred thousand dollars uh, to fund um, the recycling revolving fund. Now, Mr. Chair, obviously, with, with additional monies going into tax refunds, there is, um, you know, there's, there's an easy calculation there. Obviously, for tax refunds, the more we can pay up, the better it is on us on, in terms, at least for interest. With tax refunds, we're paying about eight percent for delinquent refunds. Obviously, for, for, for a, a financing of it, we're looking at still sub-six. So, you have twenty-one million dollars taken out of our obligations for tax refunds. And with that, uh, it's now put into this, to this bond indenture, which again, there is an interest savings. There is also some sentiment by members of the legislature that we really got to uh, push forward in funding our recycling uh, efforts. And obviously, we have a revolving fund now, but because we don't have any rules and regs that have been passed, it's not funded. This will put in three-hundred thousand, at least a seed money, for the recycling revolving fund. Now, obviously, some of the questions you're asking, how are we gonna now take away uh, that like amount of money from the Guam Public School System? I have had some discussions with the um, Oversight Chair and some of the senators in some of these areas, such as in pest control, water testing, water tanks, vehicle and vehicles, there is money within their current operating budget. Remember that we did allow for a carryover. And with the carryover in this particular, uh, in, in this bill, uh, there, they feel there is a strong, there is a feeling that there is adequate uh, funding necessary to replace these portions from the borrowing, uh, uh, borrowing portion of the bill. As for the ta, teacher's salary increase, which is at four-point-three million, um, what um, we intend to do, and obviously, uh, there were some statements made earlier in regards to how do we structure this, this borrowing instrument? There is language there, very liberal, but allowing for interest only for the first two years. Again, very similar to what Senator Shimizu's bill is and almost identical uh, to the Governor's Initiative. Obviously, and again, as statements made by um, by the financial advisors uh, of the government of Guam, with interest only for the first two years, you're looking at about seventeen million dollars in interest paid, seventeen to eighteen million in interest paid out on the first uh, two years, uh, as opposed to the current debt service of twelve-point-six million, is it twelve-point-six? Twelve-point-six million annually for oh-eight and oh-nine. So, obviously, if, if based on current calculations and we do interest only, and within a month we pass this thing, uh, and, or the bond indenture goes through, there will be some automatic uh, um, uh, savings in interest and, and debt service that can be then appropriated to other areas. And that, of course, I will be the first one to champion with, when, whether it's with the, the Chairman of the Education Committee or any other senator, uh, to introduce a bill uh, that would then f, fund these salary increases for teachers uh, based on the, in the um, savings that are incurred in debt service as a result of the structuring of, of the bond indenture. Anyway, in a nutshell, uh, Mr. Chair, that's the purpose uh, for this amendment. I'm asking for your support, members of the, of the body, understanding that we're trying to arrive at a consensus here.
All right, on the amendments, Senator Espishio.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm all for uh, arriving at a consensus, but we still have to play by the rules. Uh, I believe that um, there are a couple of problems with this amendment, uh, not including the content, which uh, we probably could discuss, but um, the front, uh, more importantly, I think, uh, this is a motion to reconsider.
Senator Espishio, I'm gonna state this very clear. This is not a motion for reconsideration. This is a separate amendment, although it has similar functions as the one that was offered earlier. And if you believe it's otherwise, you can go ahead and make a motion to override the ruling, but that is my ruling.
Well, I'm happy that I got you to say that on the record, Mr. Chairman, because we spent the whole day, the whole day talking about section one, agreeing to the distribution of these funds uh, by majority, and now at nine-thirty at night, um, not even an hour and a half later, uh, we're going to entertain an amendment that would replace everything that we talked about today. I believe in that sense, it's a motion to reconsider, but if you wanna rule, there's not enough votes in here to uh, overrule the chair. But I just wanna state for the record, uh, that is a motion to reconsideration, and uh, and you obviously disagree. The second thing is, uh, I think that we should vote on this um, uh, item, or item as a, so I move to divide the question.
The motion to divide the question, is there any objection? If there are none, we'll go ahead and divide the question on part one of the amendment. Objection? On part two? Without objection?
Right, then.
Go ahead. On part three?
Cool.
Senator Guthers.
Matter, uh, Mr. Chairman. We're going to delete the portion for the teacher's salary increase proposed at the request of this legislature by the Civil Service Commission?
That is one of the items in section three.
And also, uh, the, uh, other items that are critical to keep our schools open, like the water tanks, et cetera. You know, I, I understand Senator Cabo's uh, needs and concerns, but I'm also very, very concerned, Mr. Chairman, about our ability to recruit teachers to our school system and keep our teachers, and also to keep our schools open, particularly when we see these frequent water outages. If you think about what it costs to close a school, to send children home because there's no water, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars every day when a school is closed because of water outages. So, I, uh, I'd like to get more clarity from uh, the sponsor of this amendment to please explain, really in a little more detail, why this is so necessary.
Senator Cabo, you yield.
Obviously, the good Senator has been in the floor for the same amount of time that I've been over the past day, and some of the issues that have been brought up, and very, actually, very emotional uh, issues brought up i, in regards to uh, appropriations to certain areas. I'm trying to arrive at a consensus. Obviously, there are some individuals that feel that the tax refunds are very important and that it's actually savings as a result of paying, rather than paying eight percent, maybe paying five and three-quarter percent. In regards to education, there was, there was, again, discussions with the Chairman of Edu, uh, Acting Chair of Education, as well as there is, um, there is a carryover measure that there, that the areas in regards to pest control, water testing, water fountains and vehicles, with the carryover of, I think it's over a million dollars, that should be adequate to fund those within their operational requirements. As for the teacher's salary increase, there, there are some issues about operations, about paying on a loan for operations. And, and that is why there's desire that maybe, this is from some of the senators, that, that you don't pay certain operating expenses. One way to, obviously, personnel costs are operating expenses. So, what we've done is, we've taken this out, but also clearly understanding that with, with taking it out of a, of a, of a loan, a bond indenture, that we understand, based on financial analysts, that when, when, when this thing goes to New York and, and is sent out in the market within a month, that if, if it's structured based on the same uh, language as Bill one-sixty-eight is introduced by yourself, good Senator, that with the print, with interest only, there will be debt service savings for the first year between three and four million dollars. And I'll be the first one to champion that, that with whatever debt service savings that we have upon getting this thing into the market, I'll be the first one to champion either introducing a bill or cosponsoring a bill that would fund uh, teacher salaries. But see, so, so, some of this stuff was also philosophical and bent. And obviously, uh, as Chairman of, of the committee, as acting speaker, over a house that has no majority, I am attempting to work a compromise and consensus. I think it's very fair, it's a very, it's a very uh, considerate uh, a motion and amendment. I think it's, it takes into consideration the issues that have been brought up by my colleagues, and um, I'm hoping for your, your kind consideration as well. But I hope I've answered your question.
Senator Guthers. All right. Any other speakers on section three? All right. Section four. Senator Pangolino. Okay, back on section three.
Yeah, once again, um, you know, Mr. Chair, when the consideration of this was initially brought up earlier this evening, um, I certainly support the concept of trying to fund these, funding these things out of uh, operational funds, uh, just because the items here are what you would term consumables and not beyond a, a lifespan of the financing. But it was very conditional, I think, in terms of my support for, for this was that we have to fund it regularly. We, we can't not fund water testing, uh, and place our hopes that we'll get this to market and that we will have debt savings, and only then will we test water for our children in the public school system. I just don't think that's prudent either, you know? And I understand the need to, to try and, and work with the rest of the body and, um, in trying to uh, coalesce a, a majority here, you know, and um, but, uh, you know, let me remind you of what, uh, a phrase that has been, uh, one often touted, you know, is that a single moral woman makes a majority. You don't need eight. And I say women because we, uh, we have some, some very strong women in this body, in this hall, um, right now. And so, as we're trying to find and, and coalesce a majority, I just hope we're not doing things that, uh, uh, we're going to sh, shrek our duty to our children in terms of taking this out of the funding and putting, putting uh, the health of the children at risk. And we know it's there. We, we, we tested the water in the schools, we found out that they weren't, uh, safe, uh, that the water fountains weren't working and that the children were out there in the hot sun playing without access to hydrate themselves. And all of this places the children at risk. And it is these kind of things that we must prioritize in the operational funding. Uh, and to just take it out and not go back and find the money in the, in the, uh, in the general fund and earmark it specifically for these purposes, um, you know, in our quest to find a majority, we may just, uh, be, uh, moving further and further away from our moral responsibility to our children in this whole, thank you.
All right, on section four. Okay. Section five. Section fi, no, no, we're not adding a second new section there. Oh, you're talking about section five of the amendment? Okay, yes, you can speak on it. Senator Shimizu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna ask the author on the sidebar, uh, just this, this question, just to clarify in my mind. Uh, this is to add a new subsection K, and it's to, it's an additional three-hundred, I mean, it's, we're going to put three-hundred thousand dollars for recycling revolving fund. What is the, uh, the, is there a balance right now in the, in this recycling revolving fund?
Senator Cabo, you.
Sure, I'll yield to the question. Again, very good question. There's actually a zero balance in the recycling revolving fund. It has been created a little bit earlier on in the, um, in the session, a few, I don't know whether it was yes, the yesterday, uh, the day before, or, um, whatever, there was a few days ago that there was, uh, the, an amendment made to try to ratify the rules and regulations that would be setting up the, the revenue, uh, vehicle for funding the, the recycling revolving fund. It did not go through, and again, there was a limit, much debate and discussion about it. Uh, obviously, there was a member of the legislature, the Oversight Chair of, um, um, of Public Works, that has some strong issues in regards to getting some funding into this, the, the recycling revolving fund, and it, it was a major issue of, of this Oversight Chair. So, again, trying to, to, to assist the Oversight Chair in getting at least some startup seed money, uh, for this fund, um, this is the intent of, uh, of this measure here. There is a fund, there is a zero balance, uh, but, um, this is what I'm attempting to do, is to put some seed money. Obviously, we really need to, to move forward in, in, in increasing our, our efforts and, and giving resource for efforts in recycling, uh, our waste material here in Guam.
Thank you for that, um. I'm, I'm still curious, um, again, if the good author would just, uh, relate to me. This is, uh, over, it's over a quarter of a million dollars of a seed money, you know? And when I looked at seed money, when I look at seed money, I said to myself, well, something's gonna grow, you know? And that tree, over a quarter of a million dollars, uh, is a seed money to grow the recycling? I mean, are we dispersing monies or are, like, the aluminum, uh, recycling, uh, efforts, they come in and they sell it to, I guess, the recyclers and, and so forth? But where, I'm trying to figure out, over a quarter of a million dollars to, for seed money, what will be the end, um, the fruits of, of, of that seed money? What would the, the, over a quarter of a million dollars on a zero balance? What, what would the people of Guam, and how would that be dispersed, uh, if there's no rules or regulation? This, I'm not against the issue of the recycling revolving fund, but are we now putting over a quarter of a million dollars in there just to get it started? And if so, what is the startup cost going to go to?
Gonna call for recess.
Thank you.
I'll come back, at which point, hopefully, provide that explanation.
Thank you. Two minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for, um, taking a, a, a one-minute break in order to be able to, to, um, identify, um, you know, over a quarter of a million dollars for, to the recycling revolving fund that has zero. From what I understand from the good Chair of, uh, of the finance and budget is that uh, that amount was, was shared to him by the Chairman, the Oversight Chair, and then when we, uh, wanted to find out how it's going to be spent, so, that, how it's gonna be spent will be based on a rules and regulations that has not been adopted. So, in other words, it's giving three-hundred thousand dollars, appropriating through the bond, three-hundred thousand dollars, uh, in good faith, because the rules and regulation, um, hasn't, uh, been done. So, having said that, uh, I would like to offer that the three-hundred thousand dollars to the revolving, uh, funds shall, if, I'm thinking out loud now here, shall be, um, used upon the adoption of the rules and regulations.
If there's no objection to that amendment? It will be subject to the adoption of the rules and regulations? Okay, without objections, so ordered. Senator Espishio.
Thank you, um, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I support what, um, Senator Spaldan is, uh, attempting to do here. I know that this, uh, item five is brainchild, but I also know that he tried to, um, get the legislature to adopt the, uh, rules and regs that the Director of, uh, Pu, Public Works, uh, was, uh, required to promulgate, uh, and ultimately, the legislature to approve. Uh, sometime in the beginning of this term, I wrote a letter to the Attorney General to ask what the status is of the monies that should have been collected on the, uh, recycling revolving fund, and there was some problem, the Revenue and Tax Director did not want to collect because the law required the Public Works Director to promulgate those, uh, rules and regs. When the Chairman presented this matter before the legislature, uh, that presentation was deficient because it did not obtain an economic impact statement, and then we, at that time, we argued that the, uh, EIS is required for any fees that are going to be, uh, increased and promulgated, uh, as a result of the Administrative Adjudication Act, and I didn't want the legislature to continue to be inconsistent and require an EIS for the departments, but yet, when it comes to this body, we're not going to recognize, uh, those requirements. And I offered a remedy, and the remedy was, rather than saying the Director of Public Works shall promulgate those rules and regs, the remedy, according to the Attorney General's office, is if you just change the word "shall" to "may," uh, it, 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 it lessens that, um, requirement, and, and essentially, this legislature will not even have to, um, officially adopt those rules and regs. And so, I'm not so sure if, uh, item five is necessary. I know the Chairman is concerned because we also appropriated three-hundred thousand dollars from Public Works's budget to fund the, uh, ongoing island-wide beautification program, and we had language there that would require that, uh, when funds are collected and deposited into the recycling revolving fund, then the Department of Public Workshop be reimbursed as three-hundred thousand. So, you know, I caution our colleagues that as soon as this money is, um, deposited, it's gonna go directly to DPW. So, again, essentially, this three-hundred thousand dollars, uh, will be used, uh, for operations, and so, there's, I don't know if item five is necessary, uh, to even appropriate three-hundred thousand dollars to that fund, because if Chairman Espaldan just moves to amend, um, the enabling legislation, uh, and, and follow the recommendations of the Attorney General, then we do not need to have this three-hundred thousand dollars, um, mortgage based on this, uh, refinancing scheme. So, um, notwithstanding the previous Speaker's amendment, uh, I'm gonna object because there's another way to address this. If you have eight votes, you have eight votes, but I have to object for the record.
All right. Any other speakers on the section? If there are none, there are objections raised. All those in favor of the section, please raise your hand. All right. On section five of the amendment, on section five, the motion is to strike section five, am I correct? Delete section five. All right, again, on the motion to delete, as amended, to delete section five in its entirety, again, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. The motion is to strike section five of the amendment, to delete the section. Yes. Of the amended section.
Of, of the amended section.
You're amended, that's correct. Okay.
One minute recess.
Okay, one minute recess.
That the Bank of America Securities presented the, obviously, the Bond Council has some concern with appropriating to this fund, so, notwithstanding, I guess, if I had known the Bond Council's objections, Mr. Chairman, all my comments would have offered a remedy had we, uh, continued to strike this out, so, uh, the Bond Council's recommendation is we strike this out, and everything I said is, we could address Chairman Espaldan's concern by amending that enabling statute.
So, so your motion is still to strike the section? All right, now, we're, we're, we're calling for the vote on, to leave section. Yeah, okay, and if there are no objection?
Just, just for the record, there's no Bond Council present.
No, it's just the, uh, Financial Advisor.
Financial Advisor.
Correct, yes, correct. All right, if there are no objection, so ruled. All right. Yes, Senator Shimizu.
Mr. Chairman, uh, since there was no objection, and there's three-hundred thousand that I saw that was deleted, you know, if I'm in order, I'd like to, um, proctor an amendment, please, and it's to add a new section, blah, 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 to read as follows, that the three-hundred thousand dollars shall be appropriated, shall be, uh, for bus stops. Yeah, school bus stops.
For the construction of bus stops?
Yes, because, and the reason why I say that, Mr. Chairman, is because when I talked with the Director of Public Works, and many people came up to me, said, "Well, we just have to wait for a study to be done." And then, and, 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 in, in another legislation, I went ahead and, and put in that we shall have bus stops, you know, the study, but then again, the, what's gonna come back is this, there's no money, you didn't give us any money. So, since this fell, you know, to give to, uh, the, the, the recycling revolving fund, and there is, in day, three-hundred thousand dollars, without having any, you know, it's a guesstimate, I do know that right now, the rainy season is so bad, and I would like to earmark that three-hundred thousand dollars to the Department of Public Works for building bus stops.
All right, on the motion to appropriate as a new item ten?
Yes.
Senator Shimizu?
Yes.
Three-hundred thousand dollars for the construction of bus stops through the Department of Public Works?
Yes, sir.
That's correct?
Yes, sir.
Are there any comment, comments, sorry, Senator Juan Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. Chairman, uh, one of the things that I was kinda concerned about here, yes, when we started to take some of these items out, uh, in the hopes that maybe they could be funded under, uh, their operations budget, or even with the carryovers, and, and, and I, I would really just prefer that, that, that three-hundred thousand just go right back to where we were originally, especially when it comes to, uh, the water tanks at the school, you know, uh, uh, my colleague who, Senator Ben, who spoke about it and, you know, earlier, that's exactly what I, I thought that, if anything else, I can understand maybe the vehicles, not purchasing, you see, the vehicles, but, uh, something as critical as water, I would still like for that to, to go back to, uh, GPSS. Yes, but the thing is, I, I, you're right, but the problem is, is, I mean, amend his amendment?
I'll object to that.
Okay, so, we, we, we dispose of his amendment and then, then, I'll offer my amendment.
Can I speak on her men, her?
Yeah, just, just, Senator Shimizu, just a second. Senator Juan Pat, does that conclude your comments? Is that in the form of an objection or no? All right. Any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Shimizu, you can close on your amendment.
Oh, thank you very much. But, you know, right now, we have been having torrential rain, thunder, lightning, fast floods, you know? It's almost like the season for only the ducks that would like it at that time, and I really feel bad when I see our children, our pre-teens, and even our, our teenagers there. And the reason why I just jumped at this, actually, I really just jumped at it, because Public Works has told me that, you know, we have to study this, we have to wait till we put out the bids for all the roads, all of the capital improvements and so forth. And I did mention this earlier, that, you know, we, we, the government can move mountains if it wants to. And you know, for the sake of our children not having to deal... deal with this torrential rains that have occurred these past few days, I beg my colleagues to give Public Works the money so that he can expeditiously move out and get bus stops for our children. You know, I'm even tempted to go out and see where bus stops are not being used, and maybe it can be lifted and relocated. You know? But at least I'm trying something. But not to have tried because it might break? That's, that's not a good enough sidebar comment. We must give our children, we have makeshifts all over the island, especially when we go around the island to pay our respects or go to our parties, christening and so forth. Solamansenbatitit. So yes, I jumped on this. If it's not gonna be used for that, somebody else would jump on it. And I think it's good that we do this. I think it's really good. And in closing, I ask my colleagues, for the sake of the children, this really goes directly to the children because we already passed this legislation that you can't drink beer there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
There has been objection to the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, motion fails. Uh, Senator Wapet?
There's nobody here, Mr. Chairman.
I beg your pardon, there are people here.
See, there's another one just coming in.
All right, we'll do it again. As many ears in favor, please raise your hand. The amendment, huh? Okay, so here we go again. One, two, three, four, five. Five votes, I'm sorry.
Six, over there.
Six still doesn't.
Chairman of Ways and Means.
Senator Wapet, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like to, um, to include this amendment that the three hundred thousand be a use for the school water tanks and water fountains.
On the motion, without objection, so ordered. We are completed with section one.
For the children, anything for the children.
Section two, any comments on section two? If none, section three.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Chair. Section two.
We are past section two. Section three.
Local sales of the bonds.
If no comments, section four.
Mr. Chair, these are all boilerplates, right? These are all boilerplates, section four, section five, section six, section seven, and section eight, except there's some deletion. The reason why I ask that, 'cause now we're going number by number versus that of just allowing people to, to jump.
That's the same. We, we reproach this, this, just as we did section one.
Okay.
Okay, if nothing on section five? Senator Pangolino.
Yeah, on section five, we're, we're referencing once again that the indenture is attached, and it is in fact not attached, so either.
We'll direct the, um, Financial Advisor, and I think O F B has got a draft, um. Uh, Senator Calvo, with respect to attachment A on the indenture. Could you? Yeah, one minute recess. Committee of the whole is back in order. Senator Pangolino, just a minute. Senator Pangolino, do us the, um, do you have a motion with respect to this, uh, section?
Yes, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, I just moved that we delete, uh, uh, section five.
All right, on the motion, no objection, so ordered. On s- I'm sorry, Senator Guthers, do you have any point on section five, obviously? All right, on section six. No comments on section six, section seven. If nothing, section eight. On section eight? I'm sorry? We just went through seven. We did. No comments. On section eight. Senator Luhan.
Can I just get a, a, a thirty-second recess, just real quick?
Brief recess. Committee of the whole is back in order. Senator Ishizaki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I propose an amendment on section eight, and that is to completely repeal, uh, section two-two-four-one-five of Title V. This is concerning promissory notes, and, and I listened to two presentations by the Bond Council, and they had a very firm opinion on the, uh, the problems we face with the continued use of the promissory note provisions of the statute. So I'd like, uh, a little input from her, if you don't mind, sir.
Okay, so the amendment is to replace section eight with the revised language that you have. On the amendment from, uh, Senator Ishizaki? All right, there's an objection. As many ears are in favor? If there's no further conversation, any further comment on the amendment from Senator Ishizaki?
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we proceed, could we, uh, get a, uh, input from our Economic Advisor?
Okay, can we get a one-minute recess, uh, real quick? Committee of the whole is back in order. Senator Ishizaki?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I'd like to withdraw the last amendment and proffer a slightly different one.
On the motion to withdraw the amendment, without objection. Senator Ishizaki?
I, I'd like to just proffer that we lower the interest rate for, uh, promissory notes from seven percent to six percent, and I'll be very happy with that.
On the motion to amend, without objection, so ordered. On the main amendment, no further comments? So? Was there any further comments on section eight? Correct. All right. All right. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we've completed with chapter eight. We are now on chapter nine. We'll take a brief recess to get all our items together.